I'd like to call this meeting of the Faribault School Board to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Uh, yes, we do. Five members are here, two are absent.
All right. Then we'll continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item will be to approve the agenda. There will be one addition under B, Item B, and this will be number thirteen. And this will be action on the Minnesota State Academies Faribault Public Schools tuition agreement. That's something that we've been doing for quite a number of years now, but it needs to be added to the agenda at that point, B-13. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, recognition and awards. We have, I'm going to ask that our principals, Mike Mahoff and Jamie Benty, if you would be so kind as to introduce our new...
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure to introduce Amber Belstra. Amber is a former high school special ed teacher, and she'll be coming to us as our behavior evangelist. She's been given out the summer long per contract, is an extended contract, more than the teachers requested administration, but she's been playing away, and they care business.
All right. Well, welcome, Amber. We're glad to have you here.
I have two introductions this evening. My far left over here is Mr. Joe Sage. Joe comes to us from Choppity Public School District, where he was a physics teacher and a district technology, they don't use coach, okay, district tech coach. There is also the head golf coach there as well. So he comes to us with a wealth of information, and he's going to be our ninth grade academy coordinator this coming school year. So he's been in quite a bit this summer, working with the ninth grade academy team, and they are ready to go. They are, we have got a bunch of stuff, we've been pushing up, pushing out about that over social media, and I think people are getting really excited, so.
All right. Welcome, Joe.
My near left here is Mr. Sean Peck. Mr. Peck comes to us from Henry Simpley High School in Mandoka Heights area. He spent seven years, eight years teaching in social studies at Abbott. He was also at the Abbott Site Coordinator up there, and was a volleyball and baseball coach as well. So we have been working closely on, last morning you saw the handbook come through that he worked on diligently this summer, so there's been a lot of pieces that he's been working on as well this summer, so.
Well, welcome, Sean. And on behalf of my missing colleague, physics professor at St. Olaf, sure he's glad to see you here.
Thank you.
Welcome to both of you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benty. All right. That would bring us to item four, community comment. Anyone who would wish to address the board, please come to the front. And we have a three-minute limit per speaker and fifteen-minute limit per topic. Is there anyone who would like to address? Welcome. Yes, please.
So, hello, I'm Kevin Hugo. I am the coding and robotics teacher, and I'm really looking forward to this position. I've been working with Mike for over a month now, getting things ready for the school year. I think it's a great opportunity for the students. I mean, these are computer programming and engineering skills that employers are really asking for. Now, I was given a conditional contract, and I've done all of the requirements of the conditional contract, but my concern is that I was omitted from the employment, approving the contract tonight. So it's unclear to me, do I come into work? Do I not come into work? Who's going to teach the class? So that's unclear to me.
All right.
Yep, so I'll fill in, and we just have a couple more forms that we have, or just actually just one form to do in there. And I've reassured Mr. Hugo that he's been hired. I want him to come to work the first day. We're going to pay him right away, so you are all set and ready to go. So that's just confirmation that you have nothing to worry about.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome to Faribault. All right. Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? All right, apparently not. Don't mean to cut anyone off. Public speaking is the number-one fear among the American population, so I understand.
Find that article.
Death came in second. Then Dennis. Anyway, that brings us to item five, the consent agenda, and we will approve these with one motion unless there's a board member who would request separate action on any item. Board members, any requests? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is the roll call vote, I believe.
Uh, Tom.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
I saw, aye. Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item six, curriculum, no report this evening, and technology, no report this evening. Item seven, policy, no report this evening. Now, we are on a roll, people. Finance.
Are we giving it adjourned?
I'm thinking about it. I'm thinking, I've got to read a little more here. Finance, we do have a report from the finance committee.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would just share that we approved the contracts that we're about to review as they are presented today. The meeting was this morning, seems like years ago, but it went very well. It was a very positive meeting.
Then I'd like to compliment you on being at three meetings today.
Jets, with me in that.
Yes, to all.
Maybe you can, with the grants we're applying and getting a lot of grants, maybe you can explain that a little bit.
Yeah, I think when you look at what we're about to approve, you'll see that people have been working very hard to get grants for our school district. We talked about continuing that process, and Anne Marie spoke about her work and her efforts, and how overall it's really a great addition to our school district, and we think we've really looked at a lot of different grants, and we'll continue to do that going forward. But please add, Richard, what your point is.
Explain who is the guru of grants.
That would be Anne Marie.
Anne Marie, could you stand up, please?
Do I get this?
You have to go to the mic and say that, though. You have to go to the mic and say that if you want to. Well, I just want to recognize Anne Marie, because I missed the finance meeting this morning, unfortunately, but I'm glad you're recognizing her, because as of today, we've been working together for five years now.
Yes.
And I think she's a little bit over, getting pretty close to 1.5 million dollars in grants written in five years, so that's kudos to you, Anne Marie.
Thank you.
And a lot of great support behind you.
Yes.
We want to make sure that's all in there.
A ton.
I know that Margaret has done some things, Andy and Nicole and everybody that's been part of it have done a lot of work, too, so.
It takes a team, and I explained to finance today.
And Rob, I forgot Rob. I always forget Rob. Rob, you're a job manager.
We forget Rob. I mean, that's, no, I'm just kidding. Rob's very important. But I was explaining to finance today, too, it takes not only Faribault Public Schools, and it does take a team effort, but it really takes the community, too. Lots of community organizations are supportive of this, so I appreciate that. Andy went a little overboard, calling me a guru this morning, but I really do appreciate it. It's really fun work, and it's, the bottom line for me is just the Faribault community and our families, so, supporting them.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of our staff members who have contributed. I believe I've said this before, but I'll say it again, in recent years, we've had such tremendous efforts at obtaining funding for a variety of programs that are making a real difference for our students and our community, and for all the staff that have been involved with that over the years. Thank you very much. All right. We have some action items on these finance committee recommendations. Item number one, the fiscal year seventeen eighteen Twin Cities Security Contract for Parking and Security Services.
This is just a continuation of a contract we've had for years. It's a two percent increase. I was looking for my paperwork, is what they've requested in the contract, but I think the principal was recommending that we approve the contract as presented.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't know if this person will do that, but especially when the bond passes, the parking problem that's there, that, right now, that I would like to get a report on the board, are people, are the kids parking in the proper spot, like on the street if it's posted? Are they parking there, not parking there? Or maybe Todd drops by the high school at the beginning?
Yeah, we'll check. That'll be one thing that we can talk to the security to do, is go out there and check some of those other, not just in the parking lot, but maybe on the curbside to see where they're being parked, but it'd be good looking, too.
And I'd like to echo the thought that when the building bond passes, that I'm sure it has been in the past, but will certainly be in the future, that parking considerations will be part of that planning and development process. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the Twin Cities Security Contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, the fiscal year seventeen eighteen MSAD Sign Language Interpreter Services. And again, this is an item that we have done for a very long time, and so it's a continuation of past practice. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, fiscal year seventeen eighteen Purchase of Services with Cannon River STEM Charter School Nursing Supervision. And this is something, again, we've been doing since the STEM school began, I believe, so, questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Cannon River STEM Services Charter School Nursing Supervision Purchase of Services. Boy, did I mangle that one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. As written, not as spoken. Number four, fiscal year seventeen eighteen Rice County Family Services Funding Agreement for Truancy Prevention. My memory tells me, again, this is something that's been ongoing.
This is a, yeah, this is a grant. We've had it for a number of years. We just have to approve it each year, so it's a grant to help support our social workers.
All right. All in favor of preventing truancy? I will take a, entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I'm going to make a, I'm sorry, I'm going to make a board, a chair decision, but I'd just like to mention to the public out there, one of the challenges we face in helping all of our students be successful is getting them in school and keeping them in school. Students who are not in school are not learning the kinds of skills and information and developing the kinds of attitudes that will help them be successful, so preventing truancy is a, has been an issue in many schools for a long time, and whatever we can do is welcome. All right, moving on, number five, the fiscal year seventeen and eighteen Employee Assistance Program Contract with New Vantage. Any questions or comments? I can vouch for the effectiveness of the employee assistance program. All those in favor, please say aye.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, fiscal year seventeen eighteen State of Minnesota Growing Evaluability. Is that a word? It is now. Growing Evaluability Together, Great Agreement, G-R-E-A-T. All right, I'm sorry, that was just drunken old English teacher.
This is an example of a grant that we received.
That is another grant, all right, wonderful.
This is an example of a grant we received, yes.
For the comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Item seven, the fiscal year seventeen and eighteen SEDEXO Agreement. We had, was it at the last work session we had some information about that? Am I?
We just had, we have looked at this contract previously, or go ahead.
Well, this is just an amendment to the contract.
Oh, I, okay, all right, all right.
But I think it's a great amendment. We're going to be able to provide dinners and meals at the community school sites.
Wonderful.
At the middle school and at Jefferson, so it's a great addition.
Hungry people don't do as well. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the SEDEXO amendment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now, item eight, the fiscal year seventeen and eighteen Faribault Transportation Contract Renewal. Our award-winning transportation system has served us well for a number of years. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Number nine, fiscal year seventeen eighteen and fiscal year eighteen nineteen Refuse and Recycling Quotes. Now, Mr. Sesker, there was, has been some discussion over the last couple of weeks. Kevin, are you planning on talking about this, or do we need to have any more discussion about this?
I think, you guys, it depends on what you guys discuss at finance.
I think we understood this was the lowest bid, and we approved it.
Okay. That's good enough for me. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, we really know on this. If you look at the prices, it's a two to one, and I wonder if it's a level playing field, even though the Flom or anybody else, they might have to buy additional equipment, but I don't know what to speak, I'd be careful what I'm saying here, but I just don't think it's a level playing field. Waste Management, a national company based out of Houston, I think they originally started in New York. And I thought about the pricing to drop, usually that doesn't happen. I just don't think it's a level playing field on these bids.
All right. Am I correct in that Waste Management has been our service provider for some time now? And we are, to all, my information satisfied with their services. All right. All right, I've been asked for a roll call vote on this item after we get a motion and a second.
I'll move that we accept the contract as presented with Waste Management.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Tom.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
I saw, no. Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes four one.
Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to item ten, the McKinley Preschool Teacher and Paraprofessional Position Requests. Mr. Sesker, could I ask for some verbal clarification for the members of the audience and people at home?
Sure, and I don't know if Anne Marie was at the finance meeting this morning, but she could probably do.
Christine was as well.
And Christine was, too. I can, I'll just talk, and then if I need to fill in the blanks, come and fill them in, but we do have another preschool class that we'd like to open up at the FEC. Obviously, our building at McKinley is really crowded right now. We can't offer any more classes there because of the limitations, and so as a result, we'd like to offer a new preschool class with a full-time teacher and a para to support that class.
We've heard a number of times about the growing participation in these programs. Are there any other questions or comments from other members of the board? I would entertain a motion to, Pat, okay, we have a motion.
Second. Oh, excuse me.
I've been holding back, I just couldn't wait any longer. All right, all those in favor of approving the McKinley Preschool Teacher and Paraprofessional Position Request, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item eleven, we have the ALC Independence Study Request. Mr. Sesker and I had a conversation about this last week, and are there any questions or comments?
I think it was presented by Margaret this morning. It's an excellent opportunity to increase our graduation rates, one of our goals, I guess.
Gives us some, or gives Margaret and the ALC staff some additional flexibility and help, is it particularly in credit recovery? Do I?
And during our day, but we can work on getting our students to increase their ADN thresholds, one oh, two oh, plus it's also to encourage the other districts, it increases the amount of time.
You might, sorry, I'm getting signals from Drew back there. I think, Mr. Chair, if you want somebody from the audience to speak, maybe have them address it up at the mic to talk up here, so, if you want Margaret up here, do you need to, would you like to hear that explanation? Sorry, Margaret.
Basically, it allows us to open up our hours longer. We can increase the number of students that we have from our other districts, because as an ALC, we do have agreements with other districts for credit recovery to generate that extra one point, too. And then our regular day students, too, can go from a one oh to a point two if they can have those credit, or extra credit options.
All right, and this is what you were speaking about at the curriculum meeting?
Correct.
Correct, all right. For the questions or comments? Thank you, Margaret. I will entertain a motion to approve the ALC Independence Study Request.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item twelve, Vehicle Replacement Plan. Mr. Sesker, could you provide some details for the audience, please?
Sure. This actually came out of the Facility Committee, and the Facility Committee, I believe, again, the finance was sent to the Finance Committee to review, and maybe you guys can fill in the blanks, so I apologize. What happened at the Finance Committee with regard to the proposal from the Facility Committee?
We asked that it be presented to the board tonight, because obviously, it's been a good plan developed through the Facilities Committee, so we felt we should just move forward with it and present it tonight and vote on it tonight. Overall, it's, I don't, I can't find my sheep, the number of years going forward, it's like a ten-year plan with vehicle replacements, so it's not replacing everything at once. It's over a ten-year period.
Plus, we've never had a plan in all these years, no plans. Usually, you operate under a plan, but we didn't, our equipment is just breaking down, and again, it's embarrassing, some of the equipment, right? Kevin?
Yep, and after years, of course, when we went through all those budget cuts over the previous years, when we go to look for places to reduce, we aim right at Kevin's budget, unfortunately, and that's where we first reduce it, so he really hasn't had the ability, other than it's now these next few years because of some of this other funding that has come through, to do that replacement, but it is a good plan, and both Andy and Kevin worked really hard at it, and just want to thank them very much for all the hard work that they did putting this together. It's a good plan.
All right, thank you.
And also, it goes through local, is that what you were going to say, Richard? We're looking at a local business to do the work on this, so that's a great thing, too.
Also, the recommendation from the finance that to purchase, no.
Yep.
Don't wait, don't wait.
That's good.
All right. I will entertain a motion for the Vehicle Replacement Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And item thirteen is approval, or possible approval, of the MSA and FPS Faribault Public School Tuition Agreement.
Yeah, and I can just summarize this briefly. You've seen this before, we're just bringing it, we were supposed to have it on the Finance Committee, so we apologize for that, but it's a contract that we signed with the Minnesota State Academies, and that accounts for our tuition enrollment, those kids that we get accounted at the end of the year, that helps with our budgeting process. Those kids also have access to our facilities, and we have a great relationship with MSA, and this is one piece of evidence that says that we're going to continue that great relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Sesker. I'll entertain a motion to approve the State Academy Faribault Public School Tuition Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, give it to him. He's the new guy.
I need all the press I can do.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item C, no report on enrollment. We do have the financial report from July. Andy, is there anything we need to highlight from this?
Good evening. I apologize, I noticed this afternoon that the report wasn't posted online, but it's probably okay, because as we talked about at Finance Committee today, it's not a very meaningful report at this time. When we report our numbers for finance, July is kind of a transition month. It's the beginning of our fiscal year, and there's a lot of reversing entries from the prior year that are accounted for in that July period, so the financial report that we've presented to Finance Committee really highlighted that. We're getting our revenue in from the state, just like we expect. We're getting our property tax payments in from the state, or from our taxpayers, just like we expect, and we're paying our staff and paying our bills, but the financials are just a little bit funny when we put it on papers, so there you have it. There's our financial situation in a nutshell for July.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say that she presented this morning that Finance, the full report, there were no questions, there were no concerns, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, this is just a report, no action required. Item C three, Resolution eighteen oh one, Acceptance of Gifts and Donations. I have three on my list here, and on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank ahead of time and afterwards, I will, to the groups and individuals that have, are making contributions to our various student programs. And item one on my list is from the Faribault Senior Center, donation for the Faribault Community School Books. Donation for the Faribault Community School Books on Wheels Program, adding 30 books. And as an old librarian, I really liked that one. Item two, from Royal and Luanne Ross. A Faribault donation to the Faribault Middle School Athletics. Sports equipment valued at $75. And item three, the Knights of Columbus Council 889. To the Faribault High School Special Ed Life Skills Class. $220.77 to purchase cooking equipment for the program. So again, the board's thanks to those groups and individuals making contributions to our students and our schools. I believe we need a roll call vote on this resolution. Oh, we need a second and first, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Now we need a roll call vote.
Tom.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, pass this forward.
Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to item nine. Other Committee Reports. Item A is the Insurance Committee, which has no report this evening. B is the Wellness Committee, which has no report this evening. And C is Community Education, which does have a report this evening, I believe, Ms. Anne Marie.
Okay, so I'll just run down what I talked about at Finance this morning, so it might be a repeat for a couple of you, so I apologize for that. One of the things we talked about was an update about restructuring the youth development position. We've had a youth development position for a long time in community education. That has now kind of grown beyond its means in terms of now that we have the 21st Century Grant coming in at $200,000 a year for potentially seven years. And really wanting to have management around that grant and all of the activities that belong to that grant. And then also just overall sort of out-of-school time programming, which includes summer. So we were calling it a STEAM 656 Coordinator. We like that name because A, it has our district number in it, and B, the success of our STEAM program has just become exponential. We started at 150 students five years ago, and now we're at 575 students this past year. We would like to make after-school programming at our community school sites similar to STEAM, which families love, which is that intensive academic extended learning and then the wraparound of social-emotional, the recreational, and the wellness piece, and the hands-in activity. So that's what after-school at Jefferson and the middle school are going to look like going forward this year. And hopefully continuing on with the support of the community, of course. So we'll restructure that position. Eric Sandberg is in that position currently. So that position is now opened up and restructured, and the position closes tomorrow. So, or it actually is open until filled. So we'll see how long it takes to get some good candidates in that position and what have you. So look for a new person called the STEAM 656 Coordinator, I think that'll be fun. The other pieces I talked about at Finance are, of course, that 21st Century Grant, that's great news. We did get another opportunity to be funded through the Office of Refugee Resettlement. And that's the Minnesota Department of Human Services. They've been funding us now for a few years. That was one of the first things that Todd and I did when I got here was, I said, you know, why don't you give DHS a call and see if they have any money for us? Because we have such a large refugee population. And he did, and next thing you know, we got our foot in the door and started off with $20,000. And now we were awarded $80,000 this past, for this coming year. So that's really good news. We have a good partnership with our Somali Community Resettlement Services. They will be our consortium partner in this venture and really helping us recruit and retain students, have family meetings. Margaret and I were a part of a meeting a few months ago that really sat the participants of this program down and had good conversations about grades and graduation and what they can do beyond high school and all of that. So it's, again, it's those programs that are after-school, but we have those deep connections with kids, one-on-one, to be able to really get them on a learning plan and a learning path. So that's, that's good news. I talked about the U Care Foundation coming forward. They've never funded a school district before, or the first school district that has received funding from the U Care Foundation. It was $25,000, which may seem small, but it's very significant in terms of their contribution and commitment to Faribault Public Schools. That will help contribute to the community school, especially on the adult and family side of what we're delivering in terms of programming there. So that's that good news. We've got some mini camp happening this summer. Last week and this week, we've taken some of that refugee funding and had about 24 students participate in some service learning opportunities, some intensive literacy and language acquisition, some recreation with an emphasis on water safety and swimming lessons, since Minnesota has all these wonderful lakes, and we want our kids to be safe. And we've got some cultural pieces there that we're really addressing. And the girls all have new swimsuits, and they're all learning how to swim, and I think it's great. Tina Madsen and Ken Hubert have stepped up and really helped with this swimming piece. And then we've done some home visiting. So I just wanted to talk about Abdallahhi. And Abdallahhi, Abdi, and Mohammed Mohammed have really led the work this summer, so they've done a great job. Of course, with Phil and Eric and everybody else as the support team, but they're the leaders, so that's it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
And for the benefit of our TV audience, I'd just like to repeat, this is, what we just heard is just an example of some of the wonderful things that are going on in our district. A lot of new things. I've been a part of this district for almost 44 years now. And what's going on currently is very exciting. And I would invite all the members of the community to look into some of the wonderful things that our staff are bringing forth for our students and for our community, so. Mr. Hildebrand, I'm going to present a Facility Committee Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Most of my thunder's been taken already. You've already approved the vehicle replacement that took a lot of our time at the last Facility Committee meeting. But thank you very much for approving the vehicle equipment replacement plan. Another item we discussed in our last Facility Committee meeting was a backdrop to the boardroom here, and we did look at examples there. I don't know if we settled on anything yet, but we're working on improving the look in this room here. And then the Buildings and Grounds Update, really, actually where we're at for the summer. We talked about a couple of projects, some very weather-dependent, a couple of backstops, one at Lincoln, one at Jefferson. All weather-dependent, they still think they can get them done before school starts, so we're working on those. And the tennis courts here at Middle School are due for resurfacing. It's a project that, there's some cost share with the city of Faribault. Was on the phone last Friday with them, and they're still confident they'll get it done, working with Danny Duchaine, our Activities Director, making sure we don't interfere with the tennis schedule for this year. Also looking on adding some pickleball lines for those that play pickleball. Anne Marie. Then as far as the buildings, my staff has done an excellent job, along with some summer help, bringing all the buildings back together. They're really coming together well. Some challenges that we have in the summer, especially the last few years, are with all the added projects, or not projects, added activities that the community has put on us. Very exciting to have all these programs. Staff has worked really well. My staff is talking already about next summer and even during the school year on all the programs and how we can cover all the additional hours that it puts on us. But it's working really well, and it's a great asset for the community to have all these programs. So my staff's worked hard at doing that, so those are some of the upcoming challenges. Other than that, that's all I had for Facility Committee Report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hildebrand. Again, for the members of the public, our custodial staff and our Buildings and Grounds staff do an incredible job. For the 34 years I was teaching in the public school, it was always a pleasure to come back to such a beautifully cleaned and improved and facilities. Mr. Hildebrand and your staff, thank you very much. All right. Item 9E, no, no report from Special Services this evening. Brings us to item 10. Item A, Consider Approval of the 2017-18 Student Handbooks for the Faribault Middle School, Faribault High School, and Kids World. I know all the schools have done a lot of work on their handbooks to get some consistency and clarity involved over the last few years. What I've seen in our packet materials looks excellent. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I guess I would just echo what you say and thank the Faribault Middle School and Faribault High School staff for really doing a lot of work to get these new programs and in the handbook. It's pretty exciting, so thank you for your work.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve student handbooks for the middle school, high school, and kids world.
I have one quick question. The Faribault Fight Song says they're just 100 par from head to toe. Exactly what does 100 par mean? That it's an old song?
I believe we could request the superintendent to research this.
I have really good researchers when we get together with Cabinet. We have some unique words that we always look up that nobody knows what they're called or what they are, how they're identified. So I'm sure that Rob and Nicole and Anne Marie and Andy and Kevin will be more than happy to look that up.
Maybe when they report back, they can sing it for us.
I requested Jamie sing it.
All right, I'll write that down.
It indicates, it indicates it's probably a very old song. And the thing I noticed is it's gender-neutral. So we should be grateful for that, so. I'd move acceptance, including this term 100 par from head to toe. Or head to feet, excuse me.
All right, we have a motion. Did we get a second?
Probably not.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the student handbooks. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item 10B is a School Board Member Backup for SEVSEC. And I don't know, Yvette or Todd, do you want to put the bite on us for something here?
Sure.
We can volunteer Jason.
Oh, there you go. Well, and Yvette, chime in. For SEVSEC, Yvette is our School Board Representative. And we just wanted to make sure that if Yvette happens to not be around, that you would be okay having a backup person on the SEVSEC board. And I think we're going to ask for first-round backups, if anybody would like to volunteer. It's a one-month, two-hour meeting, probably, that represents our Special Education Co-op.
We need it for voting purposes. We need all school boards to be represented, otherwise the voting really isn't legal, so.
This is listed as a discussion item. So let me, as board chair, ask board members present and absent, we will communicate with them to consider accepting the backup role on our SEVSEC committee.
It's a fourth Tuesday of every month, 4:30 meeting, and usually it's in Faribault.
Chair, I'll do it on the condition that Yvette never misses a meeting. That she never misses a meeting.
She hasn't missed one yet, so you know the odds are pretty good.
Well, now that I have a backup, though, it might be tempting to do it.
Seems reasonable. And, okay. I don't know how we could, we putting that condition in the minutes?
I got it right here.
All right, well, I'll consider that.
Thank you, John, all right.
An acceptance, so thank you, Mr. Curry. And that brings us to other items of information. Chair requests, are, when might we expect student representatives? Is there anything happening with that at this point?
Once school gets started, I'll have Danny Duchaine and Jamie have a couple of students, or talk to the students, see if there'd be anybody that volunteers.
Okay, so possibly at our September meeting?
Yeah, hopefully our September meeting.
All right, their input is always welcome and interesting. All right, school board members, do you have any other items of interest or information that you would like to mention at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'd like a reminder that as a delegate to MSBA, submit your resolutions to me or to Todd. In fact, Chad had one, and we're going to.
Good luck, good luck.
That's a good one. So there's a date that we have to submit everything by October 1st, so they can do all the research. They do considerable background work and research and a lot.
And the board must take actions on what we want to send out to MSBA, or just based on what's submitted?
I had a board approval that meeting in September, whatever that is.
Yeah, 18th?
18th.
Okay. All right. Any other board members wish to bring anything to the attention of us all?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank board members in the community and a bunch of the staff for, once again, supporting the Faribault Booster Club. We have our first-ever UV Falcon Run at night. It is the Saturday after homecoming at 7:30 out at Alexander Park. So we'd appreciate anybody that wants to come out and have a fun night. It's a color dash essentially at night under neon lights type of thing, so. And then a couple other things, this year we're, once again, buying T-shirts for all ninth graders. And I believe we're working with Mr. Myhak and one other individual at the middle school, and we're going to buy Falcon T-shirts for all seventh graders as well. And I think they'll have them for the Respect Retreat and the Courage Retreat, I believe is what they are for. So once again, we thank everybody for their support. And I want to commend Mr. Hildebrand's staff, Mr. Myhak, and Jamie Benty for the increased Falcon logo presence or the branding that they're doing at the middle school and high school. If you haven't been at the high school, truly walk around and see it. Mr. Benty's put up some new murals and pictures of students, and there's a tremendous amount more green there. And Mr. Myhak on a few tables, similar to what you see here, has the Falcon logo actually on him and stuff. So just hats off to all of you and Kevin, your team as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, and thank you, staff. Anyone else wish to contribute to that? All right, I have two things. One, there's a mystery, speaking of T-shirts. I ordered this wonderful Falcon Strong T-shirt. I don't know who I need to get the money to. So if anyone can help me figure out where this money is supposed to go, let me know. And the other item is with a little bit of sadness. I'd like to take note of the passing of three retired staff members here in the last week or so. They include Mr. Pat White, who I was privileged to teach with down at the old junior high down on Fourth Street. And he was at what then we called a shop teacher. And he guided a new teacher through a lot of things. He even sold me his old fishing car when he retired, so. I'm going to miss Mr. White. Secondly, we lost Mr. Jack Knotts, retired high school business teacher and golf coach, right?
Tennis coach.
Tennis coach, I'm sorry, my apologies. And lastly, Mr. Larry Harmson, who was a high school counselor for many, many years. I am proud to say that he was a friend of mine and always an inspiration. My kids speak highly of him from their time at the high school. He did some skydiving and some motorcycle riding and some other things that I wish I had done more of. I wish I had done more of myself. Skydiving, maybe not, but anyway. So Mister White, Mister Knotts, and Mister Harmson, rest in peace, and thank you for your contributions to Faribault Public Schools. Um, if there's no other board member, Mister Superintendent?
Yeah, we, um, continue to talk about the great things in the bond issue for that vote on November seventh to various groups in the community, and, uh, we are preparing some fact sheets to disperse to folks, uh, to make sure that they understand completely what this all entails, this very important vote on November seventh. So, thank you, school board, again, for all your support, and, uh, those that are out there moving this along. I attended the Summer Avid Conference up in the cities, that was another wonderful conference. I just did my one-day administrative workshop. I've been to two other conferences for the week trainings, um, so I did a, a little refresher, and it was very good, very well attended by our staff. I think we had forty-eight staff members up there at that summer conference. FAPSCDA has met, um, I don't know if they're meeting this Thursday, John, do you know if we're meeting or not?
Uh, it was supposed to be an Executive Board meeting, but there is nothing on the agenda, so we're not meeting.
Okay, sounds good. We had a really cool event with the middle school, prepping the, the folders, the binders, the schedules, and everything else, had Mister Mihaak and Miss McNermit put together, and we got a bunch of recruits, I know Amber was, there's a lot of people there, and I don't know how many people we had, but it was kinda cool to see all the, all the grown-ups working to get that middle school schedule and that, and those materials ready, so, great job. I am mentoring Mister Ristau down in Medford, I'm, I was chosen as his mentor, he's the new Superintendent at Medford Public Schools, and, um, I look forward to doing that, and we're very busy getting ready for our teacher workshop next week, and of course, getting ready for students, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I'd like to report something amazing. You mentioned Avid. My daughter has been in love with the German language since she was young, and she is now a German teacher at Park Cottage Grove High School. She does teach one section of Avid, and she was telling me about the workshop, the, how many, I've forgotten how many days.
Uh, it's four days.
Four days, all right. And, um, knowing how much she is in love with the German culture and the German language, and she loves working with German students, she said to me the other evening, if she had to choose between Avid and German, she would choose Avid. So to me, that's a very powerful recommendation. I mean, we've been hearing, uh, for some time now what's going on here in Faribault, but to have my own daughter say she'd choose that over, um, her beloved German, says a lot to me. All right, that brings us to item twelve, and the, all these dates are correct, am I? All right. Dates to remember, Tuesday, August twenty-second, at nine-thirty AM, the, uh, Faribault Transportation Garage, the buses will be blessed. It seems to be working so far, let's not, if it ain't broke, don't change it. So that's tomorrow at nine-thirty AM. Tomorrow, August twenty-second, at four-thirty, is the SEVSEC Board Meeting at the Step Building. Tuesday, August, or not, September fifth, Tuesday, September fifth, will be the first day of school. Monday, September eleventh, at five-thirty is our next work session here at the District Office Falcon Room. The following Monday, September eighteenth, is, at seven-thirty AM, is the Finance Committee Meeting, and Monday, September eighteenth, at three-thirty PM, is the Curriculum Advisory Meeting, and Monday, September eighteenth, at five-thirty PM, is the regular board meeting for September. So that looks like another three-meeting day for some of us, but that's okay. All right, well, I'd like to thank you all for, for attending, your contributions, and I believe we are on the road to beginning a new year. Oh, and la- lastly, I'd like to thank Mister Wolf for his suggestion. Uh, I need to give a speech at, uh, the welcoming workshop next week, and I'm using your suggestion as a framework, so thank you very much. All right, I believe that's it. I get to do this?
Not yet.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign, we are adjourned.